Good evening. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council for Monday, January 25th, 2021. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Sax?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Colbrook?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Present. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from two previous events to a meeting of January 11th, 2021, and a public hearing on January 19th, 2021. I have a motion for approval.
Move to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Bill Brown. Any corrections? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Sax?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. There are no additions to the agenda tonight. We have no presentations scheduled, so we'll move on to public input. If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand. And I'll call on you. First person to speak is Tracy Chong.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, I'm Tracy Chong from Urbana. Tonight, I'm just going to comment on last week's discussion on the ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 12, to exempt the city of Urbana from being under the jurisdiction of the Human Rights Commission. So I started last week's public input saying that I was not sure how much information city council members were given by city staff or how honest the information is. Sadly enough, that was the theme of the discussion last Monday. Last Monday, we saw a great example of how city staff led by city administrator Carol Mitten decided how they wanted the city council to move forward on an ordinance, fed city council dishonest information, and withheld information from the public and city council members. Last Monday, it was brought to light that Carol Mitten did not disclose to city council members during her meetings with them in her memorandum written and during her presentation last Monday that the Human Relations Commission had come up with two variations of the ordinance change, one that exempted the city from being under the jurisdiction of HRC and one that did not exempt the city. It was the intention of the HRC that city council discuss both options and come up with that decision. However, Carol Mitten decided for herself that the city should be exempt and presented that as the only option. Not only that, she framed the presentation in such a way that this was the only feasible solution that was worth discussing. So this happens over and over again when discussing issues. City staff will decide their stance on an issue and present the worst-case scenarios to support their stance. As usual, she received the backing of Mayor Marlin. During the presentation and discussion, Carol Mitten also made it sound like residents have avenues to ensure that the city is held accountable to the human rights ordinance by bringing up these discrimination cases at a state level. Again, this is dishonest and wrong, as Urbana has stricter ordinance compared to the state statute, and what is wrong based on Urbana's ordinance would not be wrong at the state level. Fortunately, there are council members like Jared Miller who pay attention and are willing to put some thought into discussions and not take city staff's word at face value. Well, unfortunately, last week was not an isolated incident. We've been bringing up issues about city staff and city administration making decisions and presenting information in a biased manner that best suit their interest. Unfortunately, this public input and warnings have more or less been ignored. Maybe now that something so blatantly dishonest has happened and brought forward to you guys, explained to you guys, you guys see it with your own eyes, that you will start noticing it. You'll see it happening over and over again, and unless you do something about it, it's just going to keep happening. Thank you.
Next up is Julie Watkins.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello. My name is Julie Watkins. I lived here since 1976, and thank you for the opportunity to make comment. Last week, a council member during discussion stating an option was too expensive. There was a lot else that was concerning about this situation, and others have or will make input about those. I want to focus on too expensive. That's a stand-in many times for impossible or can't. Way too often, someone says can't when they mean won't. It's really better to say won't or shouldn't and then explain reasons. Even better, start off acknowledging the situation that led to the dispute before you start on explaining reasons for won't or shouldn't. That approach would be a respectful way of showing you're actually listening rather than reinforcing the status quo. It would also be a respectful way for someone who disagrees with a municipal action rather than making obstructions or otherwise being stubborn. The thing about saying won't or shouldn't is this opens up space for discussing alternatives and priorities. Part of what was described last week was that the board was trying very hard to negotiate, and there was an impasse, a contradiction the board has run up against in previous years. It sounded as if someone was being stubborn because of the way they interpreted municipal ordinance and state law. It's been said elsewhere that the safest communities have the most services, not the most police. I want to end with a final can't or won't observation. Cities all over USA are having trouble because they don't have revenue for all the services their communities need. Is this a can't or won't spend the money situation? The federal government is not doing its part because military and corruption steals most of the money. Austerity cuts funding at the national level, and mobile rich people can move where they aren't taxed for support of poor people and then feel smug about it. I know Mayor Marlin is talking to many other mayors about influencing the state to fund services we need. Instead of saying too expensive, please brainstorm about what national movements we can exert pressure so municipalities get more support and have public and politicians work together to get communities we need and deserve. Thank you.
Next up is Christopher Hansen.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi, my name's Christopher Hansen. I need to, I want to first commend the mayor and council again for backtracking and backing off of the new public input rules that you passed in October. Seems like you've realized now that that was the wrong thing to do, and you're backing off of it in practice and in legislation here. You're going to pass some ordinance tonight, I think, which allows the council members to get back into the habit of what you guys were doing before you broke the public input rules and, you know, actually make comments on things. So it's good to see that you're going back to the way things should have been. And as a reminder, there was no person from the public who supported the change in public input rules that I can see. So you're really just doing what the public asked. I have to agree with everything that Ms. Chong said about the human rights ordinance issue. I do strongly urge the council members to go watch the November 10th Human Rights Hearing. And I've sent you that information, and I've sent you articles and documents on that event, on that event, that incident. And I specifically would like to see, would like you to think about and review the city attorney's conduct in that matter and the way he postured himself and the way he conducted himself in the face of a person from a resident of Urbana, you know, basically finding out plain and clear that the city of Urbana is discriminating in violation of its own human rights ordinance. Now, I know James Simon is leaving the city in March, and I think that's fantastic. You know, getting rid of someone like that who's just completely unscrupulous and has no sense of ethics is going to be great for the city. Now, I warn the council, the mayor is going to have to hire a new city attorney, and she's going to have to shop around for someone who's unscrupulous enough to defend some of the things the city has done. And I strongly encourage the council to take an interest in the selection process and make sure that we select an attorney who is actually ethical and actually has and holds dear Urbana values and Urbana ethics. We still have problems with FOIA. I watched the League of Women Voters candidate forums, and I watched the forum for mayor, and Mayor Marlin says, said something to the effect of, oh, we always comply with FOIA. Well, Champaign County Courts don't agree with that statement, and the Illinois Attorney General doesn't agree with that statement. So, I mean, that's just a lie, and you're still violating FOIA. And I know the mayor has said that, you know, we've improved the situation and we're doing better. No, you haven't. You're still denying records. You're still not filling requests. So I just don't understand why we need more deceit on that issue. I was watching the use of force discussion on January 11th. Went back and watched it again. I was wondering when that issue was going to come back to the council, and I know the point was made that really it didn't need to come before the council in the first place because the council has no power or oversight in regards to police policies. And Jared Miller raised that issue multiple times in that meeting, and it still hasn't been answered. Why doesn't the council have some say in police policies? Clearly, the public wants you to have say. Clearly, the public wants to be discussed openly and publicly and approved by their elected officials. Carol Mitten said she was going to flesh it out and come back to you, but, I mean, it's more than two weeks later, and I still haven't really gotten a clear answer on that and when you guys are going to talk about it again. So I hope someone will actually answer that. And I'll leave it there. Thanks.
I'll use a minute here to let you know that the use of force policy is being worked on internally. We met with the N double, and we're working with the NAACP and ACLU to do that, and we will bring it back to council when we have a document that these community groups and the city believe is something that reflects city, values, city interest, and we can all live with. So we'll let you know. Next up is Meg McDonald.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Dear City Council, my name's Meg McDonald, and I live and work in Ward 5. I'm here tonight again because I'm wondering why we have not expanded the University of Illinois' testing to the community. Classes started today at U of I for the spring semester. There were an estimated 26,000 students brought back. To work at my job, I have to go into work and interact with the public. I saw a significant increase in traffic over the weekend in person and on the roads. Shop in groups. If you didn't know, it did not feel safe, and all I could think about is how these young people were brought back for financial gain. And instead of pushing for the University of Illinois' testing to be available to the community these last few months, the community who live and work here all year for years to come, you all are talking tonight about getting rapid testing available at work for yourselves. I just want it to make sense. One of you, all of you, should be asking again and again, why is the Health Department not guiding us towards the UIUC rapid testing being available for everyone in Champaign, Urbana? Why don't we want a centrally located, walkable, accessible testing site? Same-day results would equal safer schools, safer workplaces, a safer community. I really, I really don't understand. Do you not want the community to be brought on campus? Imagine how we feel about the students being needlessly brought back here in a pandemic. You sit on your hands and say you're deferring to guidance of the Health Department, but you all have power. You should use it. Push for some of this money to help the community, not just yourselves. You are the part of the, you are part of the community. You represent your wards, and trust me, there are vulnerable people in all of them, some who may have never gotten tested this entire pandemic because the mall is just too far away or the process is just too overwhelming. Please push for the U of I saliva-based testing to be available to the entire community. There's no reason it should be expanded to other Illinois public universities, which I just read in the News Gazette. Shouldn't be expanded to other Illinois public universities. It shouldn't be expanded to city staff if it's not going to be expanded to the working class community that is exposed to the student population on a daily basis from here on out. Please comment or discuss this today. It's been almost a year of this pandemic. Please do not take these benefits for yourselves without advocating for the same for the public. You are civil servants. That's really all I had today. I think you're talking about the gender inclusive language today, too, and I hope that you all pass that. And then I hope, I think the, what Chris Hansen was talking about as far as you all designating time or space for you to comment back or to have time limits, I think that's cool as well. So thanks for doing that. And yeah, please talk about the U of I expanded testing because it's important, and you all are the ones that said yourself that testing is how we keep the community safe. So, thanks.
I can tell you that Mayor Finan and I have been pushing for expanding saliva testing to the community for months. The University of Illinois is committed to doing that, and they've been working very hard to make that happen. They're trying to deal with the logistical and technical challenges of expanding to a community outside of a closed system like the university. But believe me, there's been a great deal of work done behind the scenes by people on both our end and mostly on the university end, and as soon as it can possibly done, be done, it will be. Thank you. Next up is Colin or Colin. How do you pronounce your name, please?
Hi, my name is Colin Dodson. I'm a resident of Ward 2. Forgive me if I'm a little nervous. My first time speaking up at a city council meeting. First of all, I do want to say that I strongly appreciate the sentiments raised by many of our community members who have spoken before me, in particular, Chris Hansen, Julie Watkins, Meg McDonald, and several others I didn't name. A lot of the things I wanted to talk about have already been raised. So from that perspective, there's something else I'm curious about, and forgive me, I'm rather new to this. I see there are two items on the agenda referring to a public urban development project. I believe that's referring to California and Lincoln. I read through the design review boards minutes that are, you know, attached and linked with this proposal. And forgive me if this is, if the design review board is not the place to look for this, but what kind of study is done in relation to affordability of housing, considering just how critical stable housing is in the community? That it underwrites public health and safety, it underwrites employment and quality of life, and ultimately, it is, you know, an incredibly foundational issue. So what processes, if any, are used to determine and ensure that affordable housing is available in the Champaign-Urbana community, particularly in Urbana? And, you know, where does that happen, right? You know, I'm saying, you know, there are some great things in the, you know, the work that the review board is doing with respect to sustainability, energy efficiency, dealing with water runoff, and all of these things, but it seems that there's more emphasis on, you know, aesthetic design than there is on the suitability of meeting the people's needs in the city of Urbana. With that in mind, I do want to say, you know, I know that being a public servant is a thankless job, so I'm going to say thank you at this moment. I know there are a lot of things that come up in these meetings that you probably don't want to hear. And so I want to say, you know, thank you for handling it with as much grace and dignity as you can.
Thank you. Next up is Grace Wilkins.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. My name is Grace Wilkins. I use she/her pronouns, and I am a resident in Ward 6. I want to call for tonight in support of, we'll comment on quite a few things, but first one is support of the gender-neutral language proposal. It looks like a good resolution, and I hope you support it, and I think that it's responsible use of funds to reallocate your travel money to go towards that. I also want to talk about on the consent agenda, item B, the changes to the consolidated and annual action plans. I'm really confused about this money. I understand it's grant money, says coming from HUD in this million-dollar budget. I'm just kind of confused, and I support any housing assistance that's going towards, or any funds going towards housing assistance, first followers, and a lot of the items on there in this budget on the first few pages, but it seems like proportionally small. I want to see more funds going towards directly helping people who are most in need because it looks like on the public service section of the agenda that there's more money going towards public facilities, I'm guessing maybe new ventilation and stuff, than on all of the housing programs combined that are actually going to help people directly. So I encourage you to please consider more money going towards housing and community organizations and not as much going into these facilities, and the same thing with testing. I don't think it's responsible to spend an extra $25,000 to the U of I for a second COVID test just for staff. I don't think that's a responsible use of funds. Sorry, looking at my notes here. And just keep in mind, please, that with all these services and for housing assistance, that there are still many people who are not able to access them, who are on a wait list. There are people in our community, even elderly people sleeping on the streets in the freezing cold right now, who I know are on a wait list for the housing authority, for senior housing in particular. So I think these are good things, but it's definitely not enough. I'm also wondering how these public listening sessions went. It looks like there's no meaningful public comment on pages 17 through 18. The summary only mentions four public comments, and some of the hearings just say no comments, none. I'm also wondering where these appendices are with more details on public comments that are referenced throughout that resolution. I don't see them included in there. I hope that you have access to them. Maybe they were just redacted for the public. I hope that we do better to get meaningful input from the public in this new comprehensive plan. I'm looking forward to seeing that. I also want to speak about some of the new housing units, regular agenda items C and D. Please keep in mind that we have around 5,000 empty homes in Champaign-Urbana and almost 150 who are homeless. We need to connect people with housing and utilize our existing properties. I think that's important for environmental responsibility, social justice, and basic human needs. So please consider not investing into new campus property developments and instead working with what we have. The last point I want to talk about was COVID. I'm wondering why we're reopening indoor dining, especially after we just had that fight with a restaurant who was refusing to follow public health guidelines. It doesn't seem like there's any reason why we'd be reopening. It's not safer, especially now students are returning to town. I don't understand that's how that's okay. We could maybe have the public schools back if the university didn't come back and bring new COVID cases. I've heard and seen so many bars and restaurants just in the past few days full of people with no masks, just like before the pandemic. I hope I'm wrong, but I think there's going to be a very high number of COVID cases in the next one to three weeks and subsequently more deaths. A last note, I want you to consider positivity rate. I don't think that's a meaningful measure. I know the state's using positivity rate and available hospital beds to measure restrictions, but actually, I think that that's not good. We should use cases per population, cases per 100,000, like many other countries are doing. Thank you.
Next up is Angel Johnson.
Yes, hi. I was calling with the concern. I turn my TV down just a minute, please. Okay, yes, I was calling concerning the grants and the housing. I'm not for sure how that worked, and I've been listening to the counseling meeting with Sheila Dodds, and I have called her since, I think, way back. We started back in 19, 2019 of June, and then we had a conversation again, June 2020, about the grants and housing. And then we spoke again, let's see, January 21st, 2021, about my mortgage, and then it was another grant for all different types of help. And I asked for help for our church, our precious daycare, EJ Sun's and cleaning business that we have and own. And I was just kind of concerned here because I was listening back on the meeting on the 19th of 2021, and I just was really concerned that she said, Sheila Dodd said that she has helped with it, with everything, and everyone sent in applications, and that she have spoken with some people, and she probably have. But I've been after this for a long time and trying to find out the correct information. Now, we just filled out our mortgage information. Again, she asked for the information for the second time. So we put, we supplied her with the information. Okay? So each time, she never wrote back and said, like, nothing's wrong. And then, Mayor Marlin, I have contacted you several times and have spoke with, spoke with your assistant. I don't want to say her name, but I spoke with your assistant several times, and I also made a call today so that I can speak back with Ms. Sheila Dodd. And she said she was going to also connect me with the grants with Ms. Stephanie, I don't have all my notes in front of me right now, but Stephanie Mann, that's what her name was. So my concern is like, when you fill out the application, when you go through the email and everything that she asks you for, and you turn it in, who's to get back in touch with you and say, hey, this is going this way? When we reached back out to her, we said, do you have everything we need? It takes a long time for everyone to, like, first off, get back with you. And I think that she might need someone else probably. I don't know how big is her staff, but maybe if someone else could have reached back out to me, or maybe if you could have reached back out to me, Mayor Marlin, it would have been really nice. And plus, I called you to see if we can talk about a business for a restaurant in Lincoln Square, but I never received your information or your call or, you know, I don't know what's going on, you know what I mean? But I have really been ignored, and I really believe in my heart. My name is Pastor Angel Johnson, Divine Invitation, Bumlight Ministries. I have been faithful to this community. I am a homeowner. I pay my taxes faithfully. I pay for anything that you guys ask for in the city of Urbana. We are in good standards with everything, and it just harden my heart to hear that. I also.
Ms. Johnson, Ms. Johnson, your time is up, but I will follow up on this tomorrow and make sure someone gets back to you. There's, it sounds like you've applied for grants in two different departments, and we'll see what the story is on that. But we'll, we'll get back to you, okay? Thank you. Does anyone wish, else wish to address the Urbana City Council? Okay. I don't see any more hands up. We will move on to reports of the standing committee.
I am.
Yeah.
I know that Elderess Melinda Carr and Reverend Dr. Oden were both attempting to raise their hands, so I don't know.
Oh, I didn't see that.
It went on very quickly.
Oh, there's, wow.
Okay, I'll, I'll go to Elderess Melinda Carr first. And now, Elderess Carr, you should be able to unmute yourself in the lower left-hand corner.
I apologize, I didn't see you. I apologize, I didn't see you.
Can you hear me? Good afternoon, evening.
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. This is Eldress Melinda Carr, and I am a resident of Ward 3. And I just wanted to, tonight, this is from a resident point of view, because we live, I live in the Dr. Ellis neighborhood, and we just had the incident which happened on last week ago, Thursday. And I just wanted to speak about the communications that happened during the incident and after the incident. And so when that happened, we, you know, it was reported to the police and there was communication, I guess to the residents, but through the vehicle of, I guess Facebook that's set up for our neighborhood. And I'm speaking of the city of Urbana. And maybe there is a communications plan. I'm speaking of more of a mainstream communication plan where we communicate out. And I don't know how that is working or how we do that. But so when something happens such as incident, such as that, how is it normally communicated out to the people who may be affected? And if a police report is made? And so I'm just saying that, and I know the mayor sent out a postcard. Thank you for the postcard, I got one. And so I'm not saying, you know, Facebook and postcards and some of the other information that was posted are not good if someone is receiving or connected to those mediums. But for a global communication plan for people who may not have social media, so some elderly people or maybe others who don't, you know, have access to that, a way to communicate to them when something happens and that is done on a global basis. And so that everyone in the other parts of the community are aware of things that happen like that. Because, and I noted that, I was looking at, searching some of the information on this particular group. And I saw that the mayor also noted that the Southern Property Law Center mentions them. And, you know, they monitor hate groups and other extremists throughout the US and expose their activities to law enforcement agencies, the media, and public. So that's on their website. They've been around for a long time. So, and this was publicized by the media, but it was, you know, like five days later. So some kind of immediate plan. And I'm speaking to the council as a whole to say, looking forward, what plan will be developed for types of things that happen that need immediate notification to residents that may impact them globally. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. You don't see any more hands at this point. Oh, Dr. Underwood.
Yeah, Dr. Underwood, I made it to where you can unmute yourself. If you go to the lower left-hand corner of your screen and unmute yourself, you should be able to talk. Now we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, because I went upstairs to try to get on my computer. Because every week, and I've spoken with Mr. Jason about this, and I just don't understand. Plus, I've spoken with a computer person about what's going on. I can get on my rotary, I can get on my WFT program. But when I come here, apparently something is happening to my phone. And so I was, just went upstairs to try to get on my computer, although I don't have a webcam there where I can see, it's still better than nothing. So I was trying to, but apparently it worked. Mr. Jason has gotten me on, so I've used it probably all of my time. I got so much to say, but I, right now, I'm kind of traumatized because something happened in addition to what happened in Dr. Ellis. A subdivision Saturday evening when I came home, there was an incident. I called 911 and police came and all, and I'm still traumatized with that. But at least I can say this tonight about the use of force. That's what I've been trying to get on to talk about. And of course, I can't tell it all now. I did send something in to some material and when it was asked for, and I was on listening sessions and the like. What I really want to just say tonight is I'm so concerned about implicit racial bias. Implicit racial bias, implicit bias, everybody's biased, they say, and they got some, and we don't understand what's going on. But I'm talking about for people in authority, for people in authority, we've got to do some training. Because in the research that I've looked at, the brain can be retrained. However, this is done by authoritarians, a police person, and persons in authority dealing with people of a different race, or different ethnicities and all, cultural, cultures and the like. They don't, it's not mean and hateful, it's embedded, it's unconscious, it's subconscious. And they've been doing it for years and years and years, and they don't realize it. They don't realize. However, the brain can be retrained. That's why training must continually go on for the use of force for our police officers and all. It's so important that we keep training and training. To me, it's on the girts, everything. It's on the pins, everything related to the use of force and our police officers who's dealing with different people, people of different races and all. Now, you can say, well, what about the black policeman and what's going on with that? Well, as you know, when Aaron Amos was on the council, and we were with the organization for years and years, Piece of Justice, we had police officers, police chiefs, different individuals from all over the country coming, working with us and the Ministerial Alliance under my presidency and Eldress Carr presidency. And we worked with this Citizens for Quality Education because education is a part of it too, with our youth. But right now, they're not being killed now, but they're being killed now. I'm not saying in Urbana, but it's happening all over the country. And what we can do is with this implicit racial bias, what we can do is start training, but it got to be ongoing. Because if it been embedded in you, it's in your subconscious, and you do it without thinking, just like this incident I just had. That's one reason I'm traumatized, because.
Dr. Underwood, your time is up, but thank you for speaking tonight.
Yes, and please have it open for me. Mr. Jason, I'm gonna call you. Something you did was able to get me on because this is so important. Thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sure it's been frustrating. We'll make sure you get on next time. Okay. All right. You don't see any more hands. We will move on to reports of the standing committees. We have a consent agenda to pass and then the regular agenda. And Sharice Hershey will present both. Just a reminder that council member Hershey will read each of the four items on the consent agenda. If the, any council member wants to have an item removed, they would move, that would take a motion and a second and a vote of the majority members. I'll turn it over to Sharice. You're muted, Sharice.
Okay. I've got the stuff in front of me and I'm not, okay. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the city council and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call. There will be no individual discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by the mayor, city council members, or a member of the public, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and discussed immediately after approval of the remaining items in the consent agenda. Before you for consent agenda, bring to, for your, for the approval of the city council, Resolution Number 2021-01-001R, a resolution accepting the assistance to firefighters, grant program COVID-19 supplemental AFG-S, funding from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, United States Department of Homeland Security. And that is for the fire department. Item B, Resolution Number 2021-01-002R, a resolution approving amendment to the city of Urbana Consolidated Plan and Annual Action Plan for year 2019 to 2020. And that is community development. Item C, An Ordnance Number 2021-01-001, An Ordnance Revising the Annual Budget Ordinance, Budget Amendment Number 5, Omnibus Finance Committee, or Division Department. Item D, Resolution Number 2021-20-01-004R, A Resolution Regarding the Implementation of Gender-Neutral Language in Official Written and Verbal Communications by the City of Urbana. And that's all council members. Ms. Clark, will you please call the roll for approval?
You need a motion.
Oh, I need a motion, I'm sorry. Motion and a second.
I think that you can make the motion.
You make the motion, Sharice, and then you'll need a second.
Okay, I move to have all these items approved.
Mary Alice?
Before, I'm happy to offer a second, but before I do that, I just wanted to know, there is one staff update on the item of the consent agenda. And I'm wondering if it, in order to have the staff update, do we need to pull it off the consent agenda? Or is it possible to just go ahead and give it now? That's my question.
What staff update?
It's on the firefighter's grant program. There's a local match.
It was just a correction of the text of the resolution. I think it can stay on consent.
And the correction was?
I had originally written that there was no local match when the fire chief made his report last week and reported to council that there was a 10% local match. I realized I had an error, which I corrected in the resolution. So now the resolution indicates that there's a 10% local match, as the chief indicated.
Okay. So if it's okay to keep considering that into the consent agenda, I'm happy to second.
Ms. Clark?
Are you ready?
I'm ready if someone, if Mary Alice is seconding it. Is it okay?
We'll go ahead with it now, but from this time forward, if you guys have something on the consent agenda that you want to even discuss for just a few moments, like with Ms. Mitten making the statement about the change, and you need to pull that particular item off of the consent agenda because you're discussing it. Purpose of the consent agenda is to read how you did before and state what it is that the consent agenda is for. And then moving on with your motion and a second and a vote. But we'll go ahead with it this way this time. Is that okay with you all?
Um, actually, I would say let's pull it off and continue with the rest of the items.
Well, you've already discussed it and you're ready to move forward. So it actually can go forward at this point. And just the next time when we do a consent agenda, you need to remember that, whomever it is that's in charge of handling the meeting. That's what that purpose is, okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right, here we go. Ms. Wu? Ready for me to call the roll, Sharice?
What I was thinking is, do I need to make the motion again? I didn't really hear Mary Alice second it is.
You moved and Mary Alice seconded.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Sacks?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you, Sharice. And next we'll move on to the items from the regular agenda. That would be Resolution Number 2021-01-003R, which is a resolution amending the City Council and Committee of the Hall rules. That was brought forth by council members. Is there any staff comment on this?
All I would say is that I provided you with the updated language per the discussion you had at the Committee of the Hall. And I also had sent a Word version of the document as you had requested.
Is there a motion to get this out before the council?
I would move to approve Resolution Number 2021-01-003R, a resolution amending the City Council and Committee of the Hall rules.
I'll second.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by Dennis. Any discussion? Mary Alice?
I just want to say for the public that we had bifurcated two items that were on this during the committee. So this is only with the Council and Committee Input Communication section. And then there are a few updates where all the person has been changed to council. But other than that, that's what is up for approval right now. So I just wanted to make that clear to the public.
Any other discussion? Dennis?
Yeah, we are pleased to present this because it allows the committee, the council and committee members to interact in a way that I think has been missing in the previous months. And we're getting back on track with kind of an ability for council members to make either announcements or comments. It's healthy.
Any other discussion? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll? Oh, Sharice?
I just, I just wanted to be clear that city council meetings are, and COW meetings are just that, we're meetings. They're not town halls. And everyone needs to be mindful of that when we are making comments back to the public and also when the public is doing its input. And so, you know, I have no problem responding to public input at all. I think that it's a good thing.
Thank you. All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Sacks?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next up is Ordnance Number 2021-01-002, An Ordnance Amending City Code Chapter 2, Section 2-27, which is changing council rules by adding an item to the agendas for council member comments and communication. Is there a motion to get this before the council, please?
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Moved by Bill Brown, seconded by Dennis. Council member comments. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Sacks?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next up are two items related to the preliminary development plan for a planned unit development. First is ordinance number 2020-12-070, which is an ordinance approving a preliminary development plan for a planned unit development, 602 South Lincoln Avenue. Is there a motion to get this on the table? And then we'll have staff comments. Mary Alice?
I'll move that we send ordinance number 2020-12-070, an ordinance approving a preliminary development plan for planning development at 602 South Lincoln Avenue. Back to committee of the whole.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Eric, it'll be seconded by Eric. Technical comments by Lori Pearson?
Just looking for a little bit more time for the developer to process what they've heard at the design review board and subsequent comments. So it was not possible to have that ready for tonight. So looking to see if we can move that till next week.
That motion has been made and seconded. Any further comments? Sharice?
I thought it was very interesting that Mr. Collin, I can't think of his name, Collin brought up something about regarding the affordability issue and, and that stuff. And I don't know if we will be getting any, any of that information.
We can attempt to address that for the next meeting.
Okay.
Any other council comments? Mary Alice?
I don't know if people have had an opportunity to watch the design review board meeting on this. It is a long meeting. I thought that there were a lot of very interesting comments, a lot of very helpful comments. And so I strongly suggest that my fellow council members listen to at least the last two hours, which is where they really go into some of the details in terms of the design. That's it.
I agree, it's well worth listening to, to understand this project fully. Will the clerk please call the roll? I don't see any other comments.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Sacks?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Last item on the agenda is ordinance 2020-12-071, which is an ordinance approving a final development plan for the planned unit development at 602 South Lincoln Avenue. Mary Alice?
I'll move that we send this ordinance number 2020-12-071 back to committee of the whole. Committee of the whole, not whole.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Eric. Further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Sacks?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. That concludes the business on the agenda, reports of special committees. I don't believe we have any reports of officers.
I just have one announcement, and that is that the CPRB will be meeting on this Wednesday, January 27th at 5:30 on Zoom. The meeting information is on the front, our main page of the website. This is on taking feedback from the public on changes they would like to see about the, either the structure of CPRB or changes to the CPRB ordinance.
Mary Alice?
I know that we just passed rules to allow comment. I hope it's okay if I just kind of let people know that the Community Development Commission meets tomorrow night. And a lot of people have talked about the solid plan and action, annual action plan. So people who are interested in learning more about that process and the discussion topics should plan to listen to that meeting tomorrow night. They meet once a month.
All right. Last announcement, I just wanted to let the public know, number one, you've probably heard, but the sign up is now available for members of the public 65 and older to receive the vaccine. You can call 217-239-7877 for an appointment. We've been asked by the Champaign-Urbana Public Health District to stress to the community how very important it is to continue getting tested. I know that's been brought up several times tonight. But now that our region six has moved to phase four, until the vaccine is widely distributed and taken, we need to test, mask, distance and wash hands as, as much or more than we did before, given the new variants that have arrived in our country. University of Michigan, for example, their athletic department is completely shut down for two weeks due to the new strain of the virus being, and five cases of the news being 1.1.7 being present on campus. The campus itself is not shut down, but all athletic activity was due to that. I will repeat again, we have been working very hard to try to get saliva testing expanded to the community. We know how difficult it is for some folks to get out to, to marketplace and it's uneven access, there's no doubt about it. It's just that we at the city don't have control over that process. We are supportive of it, we will work with it. And we will, we have been pushing for it. But this is, this is the U of I's in charge of this and they are very committed to making it available to the community. It's just they're not quite ready yet. But they are committed to doing this and we, we will, as soon as it's possible, we will assist in getting that out to the community. And the White House has announced they're going to start or resume their COVID briefings, which had kind of fallen by the wayside. So three times a week, they intend to do national COVID briefings from the White House. And I think this time of the, around, you're going to get accurate, timely information and a consistent message coming from the President of the United States. So I'm looking forward to that. So we will keep you posted whenever testing options are available and we hope it's soon. Sharice?
I, I just wanted to add that, and this is just something that's come to my attention recently. I got my mom vaccinated last Friday. And then when I went on website, the, the, her, her doctor's website or the hospital website, they also had tried to communicate with her, because I don't go on her email all the time, but to communicate with her that she needed to come in to, and make a schedule to get her COVID shot, to get a COVID shot. So if you're not capable, if you're not able, I'm just adding this in. If you're not able to, to, if you don't make the sign up at the time when you need to make the sign up, look at, call your doctor, call your primary physician and find out if, if you can get your COVID through your insurance that you may already have or Medicare, which is already, it's a free shot. It doesn't cost anything. So your, your primary caregiver may also already have, not primary caregiver, but your primary physician may also be trying to, to reach you to schedule a time for you to come in and get COVID, your COVID vaccination.
And that's a good point you raise. We've been also asked to let people know this is free. Anybody who is charging you for a vaccine is a fraud. So do not pay for that vaccine. You can't even be sure it's, it's real. So this is a free vaccine. You should get it through a, one of the approved clinics here in the community.
And you can get it through your doctor.
Or your doctor. Or there's a parallel program through the pharmacies, CVS and Walgreens. That has rolled out slower than people anticipated. The supplies are less than what people thought. But the federal government had contracted with those two chains to do long-term care facilities. Locally, I think there's an effort to, to transfer some of that over to public health so we can get the long-term care facilities done quicker than what's being done now. So it's, it's, it's very fast moving, things change by the minute here. But what we're limited by in this community, because of the amazing logistics we have set up here, what we're limited by is the actual supply of the vaccine. We can't, you know, it's, it's, we could, we could give more vaccinations if we had more doses and if the supply were more predictable. So that's, that's the constraints folks are working under. But the logistics here are set up to do it very, very well, once we get the supplies here. Again, this is, if you have to be in a pandemic, this is one of the best places, I think, in this country to live. Champagne come. So with that, no further business. Before us, this meeting is adjourned.